Thank you, thank you. Thank you everybody. So I'd just like to give notice that we have our Hexham Town Council, full council meeting of 11th of October now, 6 o'clock this evening. So we all have an agenda. Right, so the first item in the agenda. The first item, I'm going to introduce it's not on the agenda, but it's this sad news. That former councillor, former mayor, longstanding member of the community in Hexham, Terry Robson sadly died. On, I think Friday or Saturday. You know, it would be a big loss to this town. Terry was, even after he retired as a councillor, still played an influential part in the town's. He was a member of our recent remembrance committee that was getting ready for remembrance service this year. So he still played a keen role and took a keen interest in this town. And he was even attending, just recently, the bandstand sessions and I had a few conversations with him when he was attending those. So it was real sadness that we announced that. So could I ask, do we have a minute? Silence please. Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to invite council members to see if you would go to the big friend of Terry Robson.
It's very time to be here Derek. A welcome kind, which may sound a bit strange, but we're requested his family not to say anything other than so.
Okay, right, our next item is to hear questions from Hexham residents. So if you could, if I could invite anybody who would like to speak, just to put their hand up, say their name and ask their question. Anybody? So we have Wendy. Andy?
Just to mention that just before this meeting, active travel Tyndale had called a meeting of concerned parents and teachers at Queen Elizabeth and Hexham Middle School campus. About how children walk and cycle to school and back again and how unsafe it is getting onto the school campus. We had a very good discussion, very ably led by Mike, so thank you. Lots of good input, but we desperately need your support and your help in going forward, particularly with highways development management. Because I guess they don't see things the way we see them. We would like to encourage more and more children to walk to school and cycle to school. Rather than being dropped off at the school gate, causing more pollution, more danger etc. And it's the only way to go. We're in a climate crisis, we've got an air pollution crisis, we've got an obesity crisis. We need to get kids and all people actively travelling. So I'm hoping for your support as we go forward in making changes around the streets around the campus.
Yeah, thank you for that. Obviously, you know, as a town council will recognise, you know, the school is now much larger than what was previous. You know, it's a significant school, it's one of the biggest in the country actually. You know, the town council at its last meeting invited the county council too. I will encourage the county council to bring about 20 mile an hour in the whole town as part of a culture of safety in the town and in that area. And I was also mentioning of having, you know, a lollipop person who would be there in and around there. Certainly, you know, over the years, I mean, this is in May once, so certainly we've put two speed activated cameras on the Aldale Road. Last 20 mile an hour being implemented, part time in and around that area, all sort of 20 mile an hour in the residential streets as well. So there's a number of things have happened, but obviously there's a way to go yet. Trevor, do you want to say anything about going to Tyndale area council?
Yes, I have a request to ask the chap, Chris Mead, I think his name was, to make a presentation at the. Well, it was more of an answer than a session really, wasn't it Derek?
Yes.
At the Tyndale local area council, Chris turned up and answered all requests or asked of the night. And it is an ongoing process and I believe, did we get something out in the email after that? We did, didn't we? Which basically, still is an ongoing situation that could be changed and adapted. And it already has been adapted to a certain extent. So watch your space first of all.
And we have the petition, as a current petition out there at the moment. I think that's going to be received by the area council in November, is that right?
The current petitions committee first, which I'm.
Oh yes.
I'll talk about that in a moment.
Yeah, is anybody else would like to comment before we move to the next? Okay.
Not on that subject.
Okay, yeah, Philip, yes.
Different subject?
Yes, please.
Right, I'm Philip Clark. Apart from two years, I've always lived in Hexham. Now I know Hexham extremely well. I know where the Seale is, I know where the Park is. And I accept that Park is called Abbey Grounds. But I do not know where the Seale Park is. And I think it's very remiss of this council to go along with changing names willy nilly. So leave it a few years, because I might be here in a few years' time, and then you can change every name. But for the moment, it is the Seale and the Park or the Abbey Grounds.
Thank you. Is that something you can make in reference to there Philip?
It's in the minutes, the committee, sorry, committee, yeah. It says, it's pursuing setting up a Friends of Seale Park group.
Okay, so would you be content that it was called the Seale and Park group? Would you be content with that?
That's possible, yes.
Thank you.
But I was also saying, I don't know whether Grant's here, I don't know if it was the Grant that originally started this up. And I've been fighting this name for 20 odd years.
Well, if that's all you're going to fight for.
Thank you Derek.
Almost, nice to hear from you Philip, thank you. Right, so apologies for absence?
Councillors Bell and Ponswood.
Thank you. Decisions of interest?
Unless you go very, through this agenda very quickly, I probably not need this. Because as you know, I have to leave early, but I did have a declaration for point 14. As you know, obviously because of the environment and so on and that. I'll put it out there just in case we go remarkably fast.
I don't, I don't know if I'm going to. Right, so our next item, I'm going to just, Trevor's unfortunately got to leave early tonight, so I've rejected the agenda to suit. So I'm going to invite a presentation from Colin Hall, who's from the Environment Agency. But before that, Trevor's going to introduce him with a 30 second introduction and then we're straight into Colin.
Good one, go to 35. I'm trying, apologies, but I'm just wanting to say that for you. Well, I did meet Colin after the storm Desmond, in order that the problems that I had in my area done time green and all the floods and all that. And I was to deal with that for that really. Flooding fences basically, and as you know, there is a bunt wall that's been put there, good glass in there. The residents got grant money and the residents used that grant money under the funding to get that put in, so that was an excellent scheme. And Colin got tritros recently for the ongoing flood situation. That could, sorry, may or may not happen in the future. They said one in a hundred years, but you know, the way things have gone, I might get a lesson. You know, when is one in a hundred? Is it every hundred or is it, well, this hundred years is going to be at the beginning and that hundred years at the end? So one never really knows. So it's rightly recognised that the community needs to be ready in the future. And I know Colin's aware and lots of flood schemes over the area. Very similar, Acre's got quite a good one all set up. So that's what Colin's wanted to talk to you about tonight. Community engagement officer for the Environment Agency on the thumbprint for flooding resilience. And we've had a quite a long chat the other day. We've already sort of come up with a few people who are new to the bond here. And of course, I'm sure you'll probably be happy with it, Colin, won't you?
Absolutely, thank you very much for that. Yes, we did have a nice meeting over Keith Skones, so that's always good. Yeah, a cup of tea, it wasn't one of them.
No.
Pick a thing, I get the wrong idea. So yeah, my name's Colin Hall, I work for the Environment Agency, I work for the Resilience Department and I'm a community engagement officer. And the premise of that is basically, I look to sort of work with communities, my patch being the area of Northumberland, to increase resilience to flooding. And as the idiot, quite rightly mentioned, we have to be more and more aware of climate change and sort of how we all as a society have to adapt to that. And basically, sort of these challenges that we're going to face. And we did have, so what I would like to speak to you mainly about is just to sort of touch base, put the word out and things like that sort of around yourselves. And then I want to build upon that throughout the sort of the community in order to increase that resilience. So any groups, any schools, anything like that. I have done, I've been doing this since 2018 and I have done a lot of work within sort of Hexham already. But the reason why we haven't sort of gone holistically across the Hexham area is because we've got a flood scheme that we're currently sort of in the process of. But we're going to be starting very soon and everybody will be aware of that. And we'll have sort of news of that coming out shortly about the progress of that. So the Tyndale's and the Vic End area and what we're going to be doing there. But what I wanted to do is try and sort of build upon what I've done at the Tyne Green area, where we've developed a community flood plan. So it's a contingency plan in essence. And I've got these across all sort of, a lot of different sort of communities across Northumberland. Otterburn, Putter, Acre being one. And what it is, is it's a contingency plan for if Hexham was to suffer any sort of adverse weather, any flooding, that sort of thing. And it means that you can work together with us to try and sort of reduce that sort of that risk. And the plan, what it allows you to do is, you have in essence, sorry, I don't work for the Environment Agency, so I couldn't print a million copies of it. But what I will do is email around copies. And it's a sort of, a step by step of flooding is happening, if flooding could happen. So these are the steps, what the sort of the town council can do. Whoever, doesn't have to be town council members, it can be members of the community, anybody. And what you would do in that city when that's happening. And then if it escalates, the flooding is happening now, you then have that sort of contingency plan in place. Okay, so if we're going to use sandbags, we've got them in place. We've got contacts for emergency responders, we've got the necessary contacts to sort of getting gullies and drains cleared and things like that if we need to in a hurry. We know people basically, we've got the contacts for the Environment Agency field teams, operators, the boots on the ground as you will, and the fire and rescue. And that's all there within this document. And it just speeds up the process. You've all proved here that you're proactive people and you care about your community. So if there was a flood, and unfortunately there was a bad one in Storm Desmond, you've all been out and about in the streets. This just takes away that sort of half an hour, that hour where you're trying to find out where you can be of use, you already know. And it's worked really successfully, sort of with ice doms, Kira and Dennis. I mentioned Otterburn there and West Woodburn for instance. And the River Reid was at its highest level, unfortunately they are properly level flooded. We have a plan now in place and it's greatly reduced the risk of them. I mean, it allows them that sort of earlier warning so they can get things in place. And it's right down to sort of every resident. So it doesn't have to be big, huge sort of, okay, what we're going to do for this area, what we're going to do for this. It could be Mrs Smith who needs support getting flood doors on and things like that, but actually isn't physically capable. But you can identify every single, the risks that you've got. And I'm not here and I'm not going to say that sort of flooding's not going to happen, but it allows you to greatly improve your resilience. We have a thing that I've set up called flood advisory messages. So I'm not going to take people as suck eggs here, but we have a thing called flood warning service. Flood alerts, flood warnings that come out is via text message for people who are in risk areas. And what I've done is I've set up a thing called flood advisory messages. And that's where our incident management team, who are 24/7, in the time when we're going to have adverse weather or bad rain coming across, anything like that. They'll contact the community, the flood group, the community flood plan, the Beattie Town Council. And let you know that a bad rain's coming, it's going to be coming. And it gives you that sort of heads up prior to any flood alerts, any flood warnings, which is traditionally sort of told two hours beforehand. You get that, so you can then monitor, you can have a look at things, farm, grid, farm manager, things like that, sort of moving livestock. It allows you to be sort of proactive, but with us sort of steering it almost. And then you can feed back to us because the direct numbers that would be contained within the flood plan, that you can then sort of contact our incident team with. Asking questions and things on behalf of the town, on behalf of the council, sorry, on behalf of the community. What it means in essence is, and I've already started, I had this one for Tyne Green, which we started with the plan. And I just want to adapt it for the entire community. I've got some names, I think I've got, sorry Trevor, might have stitched some people up. But I've got listed five names including Trevor. And then I had four people sort of from Tyne Green area who would look at sort of volunteer with flood warnings. Would not look for duty heroes, sorry, I'm ex-facers, so basically I use this sort of term normally. But who were going to go waiting in the flood water and things like that. We've got train teams for that with the correct equipment. We're looking for eyes and ears on the ground. We're looking for people who sort of know those vulnerable hotspot areas and who can sort of assist us in sort of assisting residents. And just trying to speed the whole process, keeping us all safe. Gone are the days where, and you'll all know this, where we can just rely on big organisations, local authorities to sort of stop every risk. We all need to work together, as you said before. And I think this gives us, gives yourselves a good opportunity to do it. If proven it's tested, so if I can have other sort of flood groups come and speak to you about the benefits they're facing. It's not all encompassing. I'll draft the plan, I'll put it all together, what I need is volunteers. I need the lead flood warden as such, who would have asked us a single point of contact, who would get those messages, the flood advisory messages. And then you would have a telephone tree and then you would have, and then I'll work with you to develop. Okay, this person's going to go to this area, this person's going to go to that area, these are risk areas basically, and what the role is going to be. And we can get it all finalised. I just need your help and I'll hold all the way through and we'll get a real sort of on the water tight contingency plan. Is there any questions or anything for me? It's a waffle on the whole day.
I just want to add, I quickly add one thing for everyone else to listen. Is training, obviously a lot of people, I'm sure would be willing to do this or consider it, but what training would be involved? Just so it gives them an idea of what they're committed to.
It's bespoke, so it's your volunteers and we recognise that you're volunteers. So some groups, Acre are really proactive, I'm doing a site walkover with the parish council and the action for Acre on Wednesday coming. Other groups, not so much. They sort of, and that's sort of, they say it's a bad thing, but basically they've got their contingency plan that they want to have in place. And so it's what you want, I can sit down and have, we can do a presentation, sorry, on the flood warning service. So everybody knows exactly how that operates, what happens there. We can do site walkovers, we can do dry run exercise of the plan once it's in place. I'd recommend that, because then everybody sort of knows the lines of communication or work and things. But we're not going to have you out in websites and things like that, sort of dragging sort of, sort of mimes and things out of water or anything like that. But what it is, as I said, it's bespoke to every single community, it's as involved as you would like to be. We just want your buy-in really. So training's there, you mentioned there, sorry Trevor, I know I've been putting on the spot what you said about what we call flood ratios, so one in a hundred years. So that, it's, for me, it's very poor wording, the way we sort of word our flooding. And it can be easily misconstrued. It doesn't mean, okay, you flooded this year, so we're good for another hundred years, which a lot of people do sort of think that. It's a 1% chance in that year. So it's a ratio. And so I can sort of develop presentations, I've got sort of all sorts of sort of leaflets and things like that. And just to tell yourselves and the community, sort of give you that sort of understanding, so people do understand their risk and you understand how to mitigate that risk. So that's what I'm offering, really the opportunity to sort of just try and improve your resilience.
Ariah, sorry, Ariah.
Yes, that sounds fantastic. What kind of volunteer are you looking for? It's not just councillors really, it's anybody in the community and the residents local to the area.
Anybody and everybody. And one thing I get asked about a lot is, I'm not in a flood risk area, so I wouldn't be of any use. We, ideally, what the realism is that sort of those people sort of who are in a flood risk area and are sort of at risk of being flooded straight away. They're not going to be the people who are going to be able to help somebody else, because they've got to be, look, if it was my house, my wife would be sort of, get me in a headlock basically, sort of to say my own house first. So it's anybody and everybody. So if you've got the time, if you've got the will to volunteer, that's brilliant. We've got a lady in Haddon Bridge and she makes cups of tea. She doesn't feel physically able to sort of get out and about, put the sandbags down or sort of walk the streets or anything. But a cup of tea is absolutely brilliant if it's so warm outside and people are being sort of out and about helping people. It's anything and everything and sort of all volunteers are welcome. So yeah.
Okay, so we need a shout out.
I can put together sort of, I've got articles and things ready in the course, I can put things on social media. I can put things that really spread through the Quran and things like that, sort of local newsletters and things like that. I can, hopefully it stays the same now, that we're able to get out and about. But sort of, I can host stands and things like that and anything you need really.
Okay Stephen?
Do you want us to comment? I believe I'm one of your volunteers.
Stephen Ball, you know, still on?
Did you do it?
And the immunity centre as such would be an emergency refuge place. So here and now, we're offering that as a facility in case that an emergency did happen. But the question is, when I first came to Hexham, I always remember the Tesco pub, it was one of the great landmarks of Hexham when I came here. Now I was in favour of the bunker site being developed. What impact has the bunker site made environmentally to the risk, greatly increasing the risk of flooding? Has that been mitigated by some of the work that the Environment Agency's done?
I don't know whether, I'm not really able to answer that at this point. And what I can do is, I can go back and find out for you, that's no problem. I'm not going to sit here and waffle and take a look at, I mean, sort of more of the modelling and everything that goes with that, that's not sort of really my area. But what I can do is, I can take a question and find out for you, that's no problem at all.
That would be, I don't know, I can't speak to it obviously.
I just want to say, I mean, as Derek, when it's one of the statutory consultees and the planning's doing, so they would have been consulted and they would have had to give a proper report on and then things.
That would be, I think it would be useful to know.
Yes, that's.
Didn't come over when it's strategic, I've never actually come across it yet. Yeah, but the action was made in the office reported to the strategic, which is company way one.
Mike, I think you were next.
Yeah, hi, it's Mike to make, two questions. I was just thinking about the risk profile. Because I know, I'm not going to go, two years ago, there were three landslips on the Hexham to Newcastle railway line and that way was out for a good time. And network rail was saying basically, that the concentration of rainfall, you can now get much more high impact rainfall for a short period of time. And they had built their systems to cope with the rain, obviously the landslide and that was the line. Out, and I was just thinking, has the risk profile, when you look at the, I can't remember the name of the place in Germany, that took a lot of rainfall. So is the risk profile in terms of a hundred years now, will it be more at risk of getting a pocket of rain that just stays on Hexham, for example, for a couple of hours? And then we just get like a six months' worth of rain, is that increased?
Basically, that in essence is what's happening with climate change. So you're getting sort of heavier downpours over shorter periods of time. So to put it sort of in black and white, if really, if it was, before you had a month's worth of rain would fall over that month. Now you can get a month's worth of rain within a day, something like that. That's basically what climate change is. But there's a lot of sort of error factors that would go along with that. So it's to sit, you can't just say, the risk has increased because of that. I mean, it's so difficult to sort of understand, because you're going in the realms of soil moisture and water tables and everything, including you, sort of how dry the weather's been before. So if you're talking about slopes, if we've had really sustained dry weather and droughts and things like that, then you get a heavy rain within, upon that ground. It won't saturate in, it'll just sheet off. So it's really difficult to sort of understand that. The risk has increased because, and this is why we're talking about climate change and things like that, and you don't need the Environment Agency to tell you that. And this is why resilience is such a need now, because, but you're right. But in order to put that in the measureables, it's very difficult to sort of to do. We do try and look at that Pontylen for instance, where the flood scheme's just been developed there. We've mitigated for, so I don't know whether people have seen, but we've got the sort of the new flood wall that's gone in. But we've mitigated where we can actually add to that flood wall, basically to mitigate for climate change. So we are looking and we are identifying that and we're adding on to schemes and things where we can. Obviously, there's a lot that goes into that economics at the end of everything. But yeah, we try and manage it where we can. But I don't want to, I also don't want to say like the arm and your death and you said we're all doomed. Because basically, you're going to go to the fireman here, you see, that's terrible. But yeah, you are correct to think that. But it's very, there's a lot of sort of measurable stuff we have to look at and we have to sort of model before we can sort of actually see a handle for what it is.
Okay, thanks for that. The second question, will we be able to, once the plan is finalised, will we be able to put a link to that on our town council website?
You can, the only thing would be, well, it would be up to, so the way it stands for the plan is, once the plan's in place, our incident management team will it within our files. The fire control for Northumberland Fire Rescue will have a copy as well. But this contains sort of people's personal details and things as well. So there might be, I mean, if every sort of flood warden for instance says that it's okay for it to be open, then that's absolutely fine, that's within that in J D P R. But if people don't want that, what we might have to do is a bit of an edited version where people's details aren't actually on there. But it's also, within, when you get into the plan, it's going to identify sort of vulnerable areas and hotspot areas. So people again might want their street identified as a vulnerable area or anything. So we just have to check all that. Sorry, I'm conscious of taking all of you.
Yeah, one last question, Ariah.
Yeah, Colin, you mentioned resilience and I think it's great that you're one of you, it's fantastic, I will completely kiss me. What, what, can you, can you offer anything in terms of creating resilience as in, for example, preparing us like planting trees to such a, you know, to work. All that sort of stuff, when you're in the council here, we're working on a tree strategy for Hexham, a planting strategy, that's a clue to try and.
As a guide maybe?
Yeah, just be around, is it true, are you able to give us some advice on that as well?
Yeah, of course we are, as I said, it's bespoke. So it's whatever, yeah, and that's fine, it makes, I mean, I'm not saying I've a million pound here where we can build a sort of a flood scheme. But it's, if you identify, and the town council has the sort of finances to sort of write the wonders or put it here, then we can look at sort of. How we're modelling to sort of see where it's going to be the best place to do, what sort of the best trees are going to be used. Where to get those trees from, that sort of thing. So yeah, we can definitely do that.
Yeah, I'll be in touch.
What I'll do is, if people are interested, I'll just, I'll just say it, if people want. What I'll do is, if people are interested, I'll just, I'll just say it, if people want to write it down, but I'll give you my email address. And then people can make, I'm going to be in the other one. So it's Colin dot hall at environment hyphen agency dot co.uk. I'm more than happy to put in speak again if you'd like, or to, as I said, sort of to run workshops and things as well.
Thank you, Colin. Round of applause, Colin.
Great, sorry, I'm going to have to get away though, the wife's lurking.
They all say that. We'll never be, it should just be. Thank you very much. Very good, thank you guys. Right, I'm going to go to eight seven now. We're going to eight seven now, we'll be last for our good friends, Sam Gilchrist and Dr Jill Turner, who are going to give us a presentation on poverty proofing.
Do you want to stand or not? So we were invited to come and speak and I was delighted to accept the offer. So I'm Dr Jill Turner, those of you who don't know me, I'm the consulting paediatrician based at Hexham General. And so I'm going to start just hopefully speaking for about four or five minutes max, just to kind of outline why poverty is such a key issue for child health and population health and the wellbeing of towns. And then I'm going to hand over the time to talk much more about the local situation and what we need from you. So in brief, so when you look at child health indicators, twenty-four out of the twenty-five main indicators for child health show that children brought up in disadvantaged circumstances do much worse. And that includes infant mortality, so babies that die in the first year of life, you're twice as likely to die if you come from deprived area as opposed to an affluent one. It covers things like asthma, diabetes, epilepsy, it covers death rates in all ages of childhood, obesity, not accidental injuries, are more likely to happen with disadvantaged background, emergency, emergency to hospital. So that just meets your flavour of the kind of things that objectively you can just compare worse off people with better off people. Second thing to mention, you may have heard about ACEs, these are adverse childhood experiences. There'll be the work in the child sector, the children's sector. Basically, these are shown to be things in childhood that make a massive difference to the outcomes in adulthood, so whether that's health, mental health, employment, wellbeing, these things that really matter. And poverty has as much effect as neglect or serious abuse or the death of a parent or having a parent in custody. So it really is a major, major impact. I'm lucky, a few people can live and breathe this all the time. Third thing to mention, the first thousand days, there's a lot of research saying that minus nine months up to age three is a time where human brains are growing incredibly. There's something called the Allen Report, A W E N D N, a few years ago now, which really analysed what's happening and the impact of what they call toxic stress at that time in life, okay? So what toxic stress is, is any pressure that leaves that infant or young child feeling under threat. And poverty is one of those things. So if your family is facing financial difficulty and disadvantage, then that child's in a toxic environment. And you can actually do scans on the brain at the age of three, comparing somebody in an advantaged situation to a poverty situation, and the brain is smaller. It's quite a shocking thing to see. So the thing to, why I wanted to bring it here is that the wiring of the brain is happening at that time. And if you're in a toxic stress environment as a baby and young child, then actually the way your brain wires is different. And because of the stress levels and the kind of fight or flight idea, it means that you don't develop the kind of self-regulation that if you're in a benign environment you develop. So you develop the ability to analyse, to stop, to think, to self-regulate emotionally. If you're in a very toxic environment, actually the wiring of the brain changes and you don't have that ability. You just go immediately to fight or flight, which is a major issue. Another little statistic I love is the gap of thirty million words. So this is a piece of research saying that by the age of four, if you come from a very disadvantaged environment as opposed to a normal advantaged environment, by the age of four, you will have been exposed to thirty million less words. So just your ability to understand language, to be able to negotiate what you need, to understand the way human beings actually relate to each other, that will make a massive difference. Next thing, I don't know, it's not just poverty, there's lots of research now showing that actually inequality is the problem. So if you have a community where you have a mixture of people who are suffering poverty with people who are very advantaged, actually that is bad for the health of everybody. It's not just the people in poverty, actually all of us, so even me, I'm a medical star. I am less healthy and you can prove it, less physically healthy and less emotionally healthy if I live in a more unequal society. And that's why I think it's a critical issue for us in Hexham, because we do have quite an unequal town. And what can we do to try and make it be and feel more equal? So health makes a difference, but also levels of trust, you can actually compare more equal and less equal countries and communities. And if it's more equal, people trust each other more, they're more likely to cooperate. There's a higher homicide rate if you're more unequal, does that make sense? There's a higher imprisonment rate and there's lower social mobility if it's a more unequal society, does that make sense? Okay. So Michael Marmott has done some fabulous work on this and the particular piece I wanted to mention, he did a big research in two thousand and ten, he did a report in twenty twenty saying ten years on. And what that showed is that because we've had an increase in poverty over the ten years from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, for the first time in UK history, we've actually had a flattening in life expectancy. Until then, we were all living a bit longer. Now it's flattened and in poorer areas, it's actually gone down for the first time ever, yeah? And in the north east, it's worse than anywhere else. So we have an issue here that we're actually having declining health. And then he did a little update in twenty twenty-one to show that with Covid, Covid has disproportionately affected the health and mobility of disadvantaged people worse, yeah? So in all the pressures we've all been under, actually families that are facing financial hardship have been worse affected. So what I wanted to bring is, this is our town, this is our community, and really thinking about the children now, so those, those women now, those first three years now, but also looking forward, what kind of community do we want in five, ten, fifteen years' time? And we need to do something about poverty if we're going to have a cooperative community that can live better together.
Hello everybody, thank you for inviting me. I've just made a note, there's something Jill said about how in an unequal society we all suffer. And I bumped into Lee and Nick on the way in, they said, how are you? And I thought, you know, I'm not good actually. And I know why, it's because every day the news is telling me that we are becoming more and more unequal on a daily basis. And I can't be the only one who right now is feeling really fed up and frustrated with the way the world's going. And it's actually started to depress me a bit. People often say to me, this line in this job, you know, I've been doing this, gosh, eight, nine years now, how do you keep so positive? I don't actually feel that positive at the minute. So Jill's words about us all, we're going to be a bit harder together to try and create a bit more of an equal society, you know, really cheering up actually. So what I wanted to do is, can I bring you back all back up to speak, I haven't seen each other for such a long time, about what we've been doing at West North London Food Bank since the start of the pandemic. March twenty twenty, we literally had to shut down like that. We had to shut down all of our drop-in sites and very rapidly change everything we did and open a helpline and delivery service instead. And that's what we've been doing since March twenty twenty. In that time, I'm afraid I'm going to hit you with some statistics here. In that time, just since that March twenty twenty, we have made over five thousand two hundred doorstep deliveries. For those of you who aren't aware, we cover the biggest patch in the county. So we're right up in Kildare, we're over in Pontailand and Greenside, practically in Gateshead. So since then, we've got a couple of vans on the road now, we've done about eighteen thousand miles delivering food to people's doorsteps. On average, sixty-eight households a week, just want to give you an indicator of the scale that we're working with now. As I stand here now, we've got three hundred and eighty-nine, probably four hundred by tomorrow, households on our list at the minute. And a hundred and eighty-two of them are brand new to us, just over the last year, never met before, people have never thought they would have to pick up the phone and ring the food bank. They're coming to us at an average of four a week. So if you start extrapolating that, the way we're going at the minute, we're heading for a really big increase in poverty right here. A hundred and fifty-nine of those households are families, right, families with some young children, three hundred and eleven we've got at the minute, and eighty-two of them are preschool. That's then babies and toddlers that Jill's just talking about, who are at that vital time of their lives. So if something doesn't change then, the statistics going forward of how impoverished and how unequal opportunities they're going to have are quite stark. I don't know if you're aware that H M C N D W P's own figures show that twenty-four percent of children living in our constituency are growing up in poverty. Now, twenty-four percent is just under three thousand children. They were figures from twenty nineteen, twenty, so at the minute we are seeing them coming up every year. Bringing it right back to Hexham itself, the three wards that you all represent, in just in the last twelve months, we support a hundred and twenty-one households. And that's a hundred and sixty adults and eighty-nine children just in the neighbourhoods around here. And again, thinking forward, I can only see that increasing at the minute. To give you an idea of what our work's like at the minute, we've dealt with four thousand calls in the last year. And our logistics team have been out delivering three thousand six hundred food parcels. So it's pretty much costly. Now, because we had to rapidly change what we did, we thought, this summer, you know, we really need to stop and ask people if it's working for them. Let's not make this decision ourselves. This is having vans on the road and doing the delivery services is what people actually need. Are we still meeting the needs and changing the needs that people experience in poverty and come and do any better? So we managed to save about twenty percent of our sort of register at the minute, and everybody that we spoke to said how much they value the service. I'm going to read out some quotes to you, just to sort of bring this to life, as it were. Just knowing that there's someone there to listen and help out makes me feel like I don't need to worry all the time. I always feel cared for and the people on the phone are always listening without judging somebody else. I never knew that the kindness and help was actually out there and believe me, it makes me feel so much less alone with fears and worries, even if hopefully we only need this help for a short time that has opened my eyes and gives a feeling of a safety net available if needed. And I'll just try and portray to you how, it's not just about gratitude, it's about feeling cared for and valued in your community and not feeling marginalised. It's also extremely useful for us because the idea of opening to the public again is risky. I mean, Covid hasn't gone, I'm feeling a bit volatile tonight about the fact we can't socially distance fairly adequately. If everybody that is using the food bank at the minute all turned up to a drop-in session now, it would be incredibly risky. It'd be like gym membership, you know, if everybody turned up that has a gym membership, you wouldn't get in. So we're going to carry on working this way. We went and asked a few more questions. So we're asking people in West North London who have lived experience of poverty, what would help you? What else do you need? What other services do you need? And right up at the top there, people are crying out for local and accessible mental health support. They were asking for benefits and debt advice, they're asking for free and accessible art and craft and social groups. So what we're talking about there is people who are socially excluded from the community through poverty, want them to have services right on the doorstep, not an app or a phone call at a county level, they need things in their neighbourhood so that they feel part of their own neighbourhoods. The next thing we asked was, what would improve your quality of life so you didn't need to use food bank anymore? And right at the top, the top three answers are all over the news and all over political discourse at the minute. Number one, better welfare benefits. Number two, the lower utility bills. Number three, better paid work. All issues that are dominating our daily needs every day at the minute and can change, that's the point. These are things that could be changed if there was enough will, political will. Joseph Rowntree Foundation has estimated that twenty-seven percent of households in our constituency are going to be affected by the uplift ending. All those people who work in our care homes and our shops and our cleaners, the general public might not be aware just how many hardworking people are relying on that uplift. It's been a vital, a vital safety, safety net for them. And a lot of them are just going to be pulled back into poverty. We're all aware of the energy prices over the winter, and people worried the job and wage, I think, well, I don't know, should I switch, should I not? If you haven't got the money to make those decisions, you could have been in a lot of trouble. I know you're all aware of our living wage campaign, the national living wage for those on the way, it's still only eight pound ninety-one an hour. That's putting workers, those people that kept the country going last year, under constant pressure to stay afloat and make ends meet. So yeah, we are fully expecting at least a twenty percent increase in demand over the winter. Going to cheer you up now, I promise. I'll tell you what we do about this. So our first objective is to provide food and household essentials. We currently buy in about twenty percent of our stock lines that we need. And we also supplement food parcels with fresh food vouchers. We've got a lovely scheme with the Hadrian's Wall Road with Club in Holwissel, where we provide vouchers for small local retailers. So we're trying to keep that money safely in in our own economies and support local businesses to build back. It's also about combatting social exclusion because a lot of people experiencing poverty would never be able to go to a local voucher, it's normally unaffordable. And we're looking to extend that into Hexham over the next year or so, next few months, sorry. What we also do is we target support, so our team of helpline workers are taking about eighty calls a week at the minute. And their role as volunteers is to try and maximise income in all of those households, try and make sure people know where to go for debt advice, for benefits advice, and energy advice is going to be the big one. I've noted in the minutes for the last meeting, thank you very much for offering to give us some funds from the Christmas light switch on what we'd like to do, some ways to support small local retailers in Hexham with that money, buy some vouchers for our scheme. The third thing that we do is work with others to combat poverty. So we've got our own small grant scheme that we help other grassroots projects that are coming through, you know, getting new sort of projects and grassroots projects off the ground. We play an active role in the town where church and community gets steering group and that is making sure that people are connected to local services and not left behind. And we also play an active role in North London CBA Food Aid Network and the IFALAS in the Independent National Food Aid Network. And that's about making sure that the voices of people experiencing poverty are heard locally, virtually and nationally. And that's where you come in, this is where I think, as Jill alluded to, is where the town council, we think, could be really helpful in making sure that those voices are heard. I think all we'd really have to do is just have a statement of intent from the town council to say something along the lines of making sure that nobody's excluded. When you're running services or when you're grant aiding projects, it's about making sure that those services and projects are accessible to people who are experiencing poverty, that people aren't excluded, that people are made to feel welcome and supported, to play an active role in their own community. I would be really happy to supplement this work with one or two town councils, sorry, I love you directly at you, drafting something if that's what you would like to do going forward.
Thank you, thanks so much. And any questions? Quite a, what you're reading. You went there, any questions?
I'm not sure it's a question, but it's a comment. I think the juxtaposition of the two parts of the talk are really, really important because poverty has become commonplace now in a way that it wasn't currently. And I absolutely applaud the work that you do and it's so difficult. But people don't realise, they just don't realise, and I think that we have a role to play in actually informing people about the fact that these people who are poor in those food banks live amongst us and it's actually not, morally for me, it's not acceptable that they're in that situation, but that we need to look at how we can support people by making people realise and also that it affects all of us. It's not just a problem they're there, it's part of, it's a part of the problem facing all of us. And so I would welcome what, what you're saying. And I would welcome the idea that we have a statement supporting why, which is that you think would be most useful, we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny.
Anyone else?
Just to comment, I mean, well done for the work that you do and raising the profile. We live in a different type of community now, even to, as I said, the one I was brought up with, into the kids' community. It's much more diverse, there's many more challenges. Social inclusion is a problem for many individuals, particularly as you grow. What we have got in Hexham is a number of lively first-class charitable groups and volunteering groups. It is a criticism collectively of which I'm part of, it's, it's just joining the works of those community groups and perhaps yourself feeding into that and knowing where, you know, some, some desperate people are and people are going through problems that others may recognise, but you don't. Do you think there's a best case scenario of where we could look to others, of how we could join up those community groups together?
There is actually, there's two things I would say must want to add. First of all, there's the uniformed title churches and community partnership. And that's the churches have come forward and asked the family set to know, do you know where the gaps are? What can we do to help? We've got all these empty buildings, we've got all these volunteers. So there's some really good work going on there to connect people who want to access local services in their community but don't know where they are. Because I can guarantee you when we're in our job on Helpline, once you've spoken to all the obvious big organisations, try to find smaller grassroots projects in some of the outlying areas. You always go, oh, Renefred at the church, you'll know. Churches always have somebody in that community who knows what's going on. So there is quite a bit of work going on at the minute to make sure those connections are made. Sinner's Advice and the camp council are launching a, they're going to act called Frontline Referrals. And that's happening now as we speak. And as long as everybody gets involved in that and puts their organisation on there, it means that my support worker on the phone could be talking to somebody in Reevesville, I don't know, Bellington. We've got their debt sorted out, we've got their benefits sorted out, we've got their food sorted out and then they go. But they're really isolated through poverty, they're not part of their community. What I'd hope this app was going to show is, oh, there's a warm hub down the street from you, oh, there's a free toddler group. It'll show you where all those other local, basically local based support services are. And when they're not there, we can see where the gaps are and work together to make sure something happens there.
Do you think we've missed a trick with, when Covid first happened, we had lots of great volunteers step forward. And I remember saying that at the time to the town council, I can imagine it's all that energy and positivity. We seem to be lost in that now.
Yeah, I know, I felt like that as well. I was putting people on a spreadsheet and saying, I'll get back to you later, and it felt like a cop-out. We couldn't place everybody, it kind of, I think that was the same with a lot of organisations because of the restrictions. But we didn't want to lose momentum. I believe that Hexham Community Partnership are doing some work around that though. And the, the steering group that I just mentioned, the Churches Community Together are taking some of that forward. Also, so is Northumberland Community, Northumberland C B A, Council of Voluntary Associates. And I also believe the North of Town Authority have got a really big volunteering project as well.
Can I just add one thing on that? And that is that I think if you are experiencing poverty, then there is a danger of feeling like ashamed and private about it. And I think I really like what Sam says about actually hearing the vast intelligence and brilliance of people who've navigated poverty. So what I would like to think about is how do we help those people be proud of what they have figured out, yeah? And then be part of helping us help them? Does that make sense? Because there's a danger of seeing a bit of a chateau one-way street and that really doesn't work. We've got to make it, we're all in this together. Some people happen to be in difficult circumstances. And how do we help them tell us what they need rather than us trying to guess? Do you see what I mean? So to constantly think about, can we use, use their knowledge and their, their skills?
Yeah, I completely agree, I've written that down actually. Whenever possible, I did, I did all the lived experience of poverty. So again, what's that say? Nothing follows without us, yeah? If we could kind of bear it back in my statement of intent.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Very good, I'll take you to the last.
Sorry, I know the short on time. And this is, it's quite numerous again for me because having grown up in what I recall real poverty in the eighties. And now working at school and seeing it firsthand, very, very real. I think a lot of people think it's somehow not real, it's very real, we see it every day in school. I wonder whether, what you think about how we can influence our MP to act on this? Because the reality is we don't act in isolation politically. And I wonder whether, you know, what we can do to influence the direction nationally? Because really, this is where a lot of it is coming from. What can we do as a town council to influence that, given that we do have an MP who is in the government party?
Thank you, Lee, for that question.
Sorry. I suppose we didn't ask you whether it's appropriate for us to do so, really, I think more than that's what we should do.
Well, I mean, there are numbers of like national appeals and campaigns that you could, as a town council, look at yourself and make a decision about which one you feel you could publicly support. I mean, it's difficult to ignore child poverty, surely you can, you know, as a council, write a letter of support around that. I would have a look at the No One Left Behind website. And there's actually template letters. You can just type in your postcode, it'll show you how many children are in poverty and give you a template letter directly through to your MP. Joseph Rowntree Foundation and many others are linked up to the, the, what's it called? I'm ahead, stop. It's about the universe of credit over it. So if you just have a look at the Joseph Rowntree Foundation, no, a well-reliant, highly respected organisation. Have a look on there, there will be probably a template that you could use there as well.
Thank you. Right, thank you, everybody.
I'm going to get back soon.
You're what?
I'm, I'm sorry, David.
Oh, yeah. Right, so we're back to number four. So three minutes of this full town meeting on thirteen September twenty twenty-one. So first of all, accuracy, is there anything in there regarding accuracy? And second of all, is there any matters of rhyme? Okay, right, I shall sign those, that's okay. Right, so, so we've had six, we've had seven made announcements. And so we had our third councillors, at the Hexham Town Council's Marketplace event. Again, really well received, you know, we get, we get really good publicity, I think, for, you know, and I think the public really welcomed what we're doing there. And it hasn't just been, you know, oh, we're doing it as a one-off, we're, we're actually, you know, being out there, talking to people, listening to people. And people know what they're to talk to and they're very approachable. So I think it's, you know, it's proven to be a very valuable way of engaging with our people who live in Hexham. The next item, I was delighted to open Ralph and Mimi, who have now moved from a small store on Beaumont Street into the cavernous, sort of fat face. And it's really good that they're actually, they're packing to, on the floor, on the first and second floor also. So, so they're now selling clothes, they're now making clothes, made-to-measure clothes there. And also conducting sewing classes also. So it's, if you haven't been in, it's worth popping in and equating yourself with that. Really, really great to see a local firm doing well and expanding and actually seeing Hexham as a place to, to be. So, so that's, that's really good. So I'm very, very pleased that that, that key stall is now filled. So that's excellent. And I think the final item was myself and the clerk met with Hexham Beauty Partnership to discuss the forum funding, you know, which, which was raised and, and that was very, very positive. You know, we just clarified a few things in there, so it was very, very good. Good. Right, our next item is item nine, so agree, the accounts for payment, as we listed. Are there any, any questions with regards to any of those? Any, no, I can't take others. Agree. And right, the next one, the exciting one. Oh, this is great. So let's just, let's just pass this round. So Alison Smith is going to do a little talk on this, aren't you Alison? You continue and I'll, I'll pass it to Alison. So get that, you've made your, okay, brilliant. So we'll pass that round, so it leaves a bit of a, bit of a weight.
So this is a project, it's called The History of Retail in Hexham. It's a new, a new signed project which has come about because in two thousand and twenty, Stephen Hardewell from Differential Designs, which is based in Hexham, it's Hexham Business, based in Queen's Hall, when he was in the town ballot. He was commissioned by Hexham Town Council to create some new signage for, the new signs on the access roads into Hexham. And also to, to replace lecterns signs. So there was one outside H S B C, there's one outside the depot station, one outside the railway station, and one outside Tesco. So he was, he was commissioned and paid to do, to create those. But then after that, he, he then, he's friends with Ben Haslam from Haslam to Polgate, Art Enery. And they were talking about how they could try and get some new signage, which promoted retail in Hexham. So between them, they sort of came up with ideas for where they could position, well, they want, there's some, there's some signage already in Hexham, but they wanted to replace it because it's quite old and dated. So some of them, some of the signs that are proposing are to replace existing ones and some are to be, to, as new, to be just positioned in, in new locations. Steve's got a lot of experience in this. I asked him to give me some examples and he said, he said in terms of signage, he's done one for the Bishop Auckland Heritage Action Zone, North Marine Park in South Shields, National Trust at Wellington and Gibbside. And also has done one for the England Coast Path, the country in the north east. And what, what's really lovely about this project is that both he and Ben have been really thoughtful about it. So whereas he was paid initially by Hexham Town Council, his vision now is to use the same branding which he designed. But he won't charge for his services on this. So, so the plan is to get businesses, well, retailers, to pay the cost of the signs and the lecterns ideally. So what they're looking at is, is trying to get information on key, key buildings around the town. And then to, they've got a map which you can't see, but it's, it's just basically, they want to ultimately create a trail. So, so for visitors and for tourism, it will guide people around the different, the different sites and take people to, to sort of more of the independent shops that they might not come across if they're just coming up from Tesco's and wandering around the marketplace and up and down Four Street. So that's contention. Yeah, so he's, he's really keen on, on sort of gifting his, his branding. And what would be great with this is that the branding will then be the same on the lecterns, on the signage and on the new, on the new sides of, you know, coming into the access points for the town, which will, which will create a much more unified thing. So in, in June this year, they both came along to plan an infrastructure committee meeting, which not everyone will be here, will have attended. But they wanted to seek the support of the town council, which clearly was relative, subject to seeing the mock-up, which they've done. And one council mentioned that if Hexham Town Council could be mentioned on it. So that, Hexham Town Council's now got a mention on that sign, as does the, the Hex, was it Local History Society? So they've got a mention on there because they've offered free of charge as well access to their photography bank. So any, any photographs that they, that they need will be, will be donated from the back booth. And they've also got the support of the N C C Conservation Officer. And what they would need is, is permission from the owners of the buildings. And also permission from North London County Council for any additional signs. In terms of replacing existing signs, they don't need planning permission, but for new ones, they do. And there would be a cost to that. So what they're calling in this particular phase of their, of their thing is to replace four, four new lecterns. So one near the alley, one at the top of Beaumont Street. I can't remember what it is, there's a few, there's a couple of others. And twelve to fifteen wall plaques, which will be based around sort of retail units. The signs are made of aluminium and have a ten-year guarantee against UV, UV damage. And there's a six to nine week lead time on production of them. The intention is that they'll be attached to a wooden pattern, which will then be attached to, to the mortar in buildings. So there won't be any damage to still work or be put. In terms of the cost, each wall plaque will cost about a hundred and twenty pounds and the lectern panels, a hundred and fifty. The lectern panels are the ones like you see outside the, the train station, there's a QR code on them. And they wouldn't need advertising consent for the new signs, but that's kind of a fixed fee, they've been told, of forty pounds. So if you, if they apply for one at a time, it'll be forty pounds for each one. If they apply for twelve at once, it will still be, still be forty pounds. And then the cost of installation. In terms of funding, Steve has said that he will give his, his time for free in designing each, each plaque. Steve and Ben have already paid for two, so there's that one and another one, which is similar to that one, which is based on opposite ends of Backstreet. And then hoping that retailers will then pay, pay for the remainder. I've said that I would pay for one through our shop, Matthias Winter. So basically, they're hoping that the costs will be covered by retailers and possibly if they're a bit short.
Well, I think that's fine.
They, they might propose to cancel, but fundamentally, it just seems to me like it's a, it's a great project. There's, you know, there's a lot of kind of, a lot of attention, you know, gone into it. They're both very committed to, to Hexham and have been willing, you know, over the last year or so to, to put this whole project together, largely, you know, largely voluntarily and using their own money.
Is everybody, is everybody impressed with the, with the site? Oh, it's pretty, pretty good, oh, it's really good. Stephen, you're going?
It's a great idea and rather than, but it's been by volunteers. And I know that Tom Gilam has some time back, spent time, and I've had a meeting with him, with some of the chats you've been talking about there. But I'd like to put some monetary support behind this to make sure that you don't fail. And to, to, if people see things rather than conceptual, I think they're much more likely to do it. So certainly, for a small amount of money, I know how much it would cost, five hundred, a thousand pounds to, to propose that, just to make sure these things happen and to give it a boost it needs. And I'm sure, you know, a big thing about this Heritage Action Zone, I think, about just all buildings and throwing them up, about people actually loving the town that they're in and that money from Hexham Heritage Action Zone should be going into this as well.
But it is interesting that he's, he's designed, he's designed similar things for, for another Heritage Action Zone. But there doesn't, it doesn't seem to have got very far with ours.
It's just people's perception of what Heritage Action Zone is. But I'd like certainly support, Sincom funded, which you do in such cases, and almost sharing Heritage Action Zone with others who are pushing to put money to propose a plan this, I think it's a great idea and one.
That's great. Penny?
Well, that's something that's on the Heritage Action.
Yeah, go read them off.
My question was that, what relationship is, is there? I mean, I know that the remit is geographically anyways, is fairly limited. But I think, I shall raise that, if, if the council are likely to raise it, I'll raise it to ask that question. But I would say it'd be great if you could just send me a few words that describe that and maybe a photo of that. And then I can get it put on the agenda and we can actually drill down and see whether there is, you might be.
Community support.
Yes, because there's a community engagement. Yes, because there's a community engagement post, perhaps your community engagement, but this, as I was, would be community engagement. So we might be able to get money for it through a different route. I don't know about this story.
John?
John? Thanks Derek, thanks very much Alison. I thank your talk tonight and the work that Steve Bardew and Ben Haslam have been doing with this. And the two other sets of speakers we've had tonight showed that there is such a thing as society. Someone who said that many years ago was totally wrong. But a question, we as the Planning and Infrastructure Committee have talked about having some signs to do with, for instance, Hannah Glass, who should be very, very well known across the country, the world, never mind one or two people in Hexham who know her. Has Ben and Steve talked about including Hannah? And indeed the Wilfred Gibson, the poet, who at his time was world famous? And the massacre that took place in Hexham, which was bigger than Peterloo? There's all sorts of things that could be celebrated. Is there some? You're nodding your head about Hannah Glass and the poet, et cetera. But will there be an input time for the council to say, well, could you include this person?
Absolutely. The two that they've had produce are the only two that are in existence so far. So the plan is as a shop commits to sponsoring a sign, that they just made up, you know, sort of one at a time, that was the plan. On the grounds that they wouldn't be able to guarantee income and just be able to keep going forwards from one to the next. Having said that, we are able to generate a bank of money to just kind of get them going. I mean, they've got one for like, you know, they've got one for the forum, they've got one for Beaumont Street that have kind of mocked up already. And they were hoping that the forum, you know, might sponsor that one and that, you know, somebody down Beaumont Street might sponsor the other. And, you know, they've got all the photograph banks, you know, so they've got a lot of historical people on board as well, who might at the time be put into something. You know, so I'm sure that they would welcome any, you know, any suggestions. And this trail, you know, can just, it can just grow, can't it? I mean, they're planning this aim like 12 to 15, but there'd be no reason why it couldn't be 2025 or, you know, however much historical interest we can find around the town.
I think it's brilliant.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'll just wrap up a fair, because nobody else said. Yeah, I mean.
Can we put some money in?
Well, that'll go to finance committee, yeah. We know this one, we'll do that there.
Over sellers.
We would like the business community to contribute, you know, I'm sure we can leave the name there. But it's quite interesting because when this new sign came out now, I was just, because I'm really visual as an individual and I was just, oh God, this is fantastic. But you start to look at like the old signs and you start to realise how, you know, during the weather, style, you know, just, you know, as things get older, how they just look really tired and there's an awful lot of different styles out there and things are just, you know, that were really nice at the time get really tired over time. So, you know, I think it's something that we'll have to really recognise that these things have a shelf life and that you don't just think, right, I put it on once and that's it and then, you know, and then wait till it's grubby and it's all the part that we replace and that we should probably keep a watchful eye and think, right, you know, when things need changing, let's get them changed. Not that we wait until they're, you know, they're starting to peel off and they're in a bit of a state. So excellent work, really impressed by that play. So really good work by Steve Bardew and Ben Haslam. Thank you Alison for that presentation, thank you. And am I right, this is going to go through finance and, yeah, pro-plan, yeah, pro-plan infrastructure. Right. Right, our next item is to receive, accept the Exeter贷的报告2021. So just for new councils, this is an annual, an annual report. So this has to be, has to be reviewed as part of, if you start the processes and just to make sure everything is fine. Anything to comment on Jane?
No, in terms of Exeter贷, we're both satisfied, everything's been complied with. So it's just another step.
I'll just ask one question, a bit naive on my past. What's our fixed assets in one hour? It's like a cemetery.
I will have to get that to you, Alison.
It's just a cat.
A cemetery's always got a lot of buildings within it, so it does a lot.
Just seems a lot on the house.
Okay, and the next item is number 12, agree and re-adopt the training in development policy. Are you okay with that? So, right. So, done that one. So John suggested that I switch 14 before 13, John, was that your suggestion? Right, so item 14 before item 13 is to consider potentially to format Hexham Middle School site and save a draft in minutes at 17:00. So John, do you want to introduce this, this chair? Lana?
Thank you. Sir, forgive me, I'm looking for the item on the agenda at the moment. Okay, right, well, Hexham Middle School site. Where to begin? In 2016 perhaps, there was a housing needs assessment carried out in Hexham. And it was seen then that there was a crisis in the housing of people in Hexham. More of a crisis here in Hexham than anywhere else in Northumberland. This was the epicentre, if you like, of overcrowding and inadequate housing. It was pointed out back in 2016 that there was a huge need for social housing. The old-style council housing, if you like, or affordable housing that you could rent or buy or assisted purchase perhaps for first-time buyers just doesn't exist in anywhere near the sufficient quantity that is needed in Hexham. And a figure was produced at that time, it was part of the neighbourhood plan preparations. A figure was produced and it was saying that 68 homes were needed to be built, affordable housing type homes were needed to be built every year from 2016 onwards. And by 2021, there should have been, if we kept to that figure, 340 affordable homes in Hexham. 34 were built. 34, 10% of what's actually needed, it's gone, it's nothing, it's not enough. Now that we've got a new school built with all its problems, but nonetheless, the middle school site is available. The middle school site is available for housing. It's owned by Northumberland County Council and it was assessed as being capable of taking 144 houses. And I don't think we can let this opportunity go past. This is the prime place for affordable housing in Hexham. There is nowhere else with that kind of number. And again, it'll only do half, even not even half of what's needed. If we miss this opportunity of having affordable housing built on the middle school site, we won't ever get to our figures that's needed and we will always condemn people of Hexham to live in overcrowding and inadequate homes. And that's not good enough. And if the NCC goes down its usual route of offering this to large-scale developers, then we're going to lose the opportunity because the history of large-scale development of housing in Hexham is that they say, yes, we'll build a certain number of affordable homes, but they don't. They, finances get in the way or whatever reason, there's not enough profit in it. Well, we can, again, we must impress on Northumberland County Council, we can't go down that route either. They've got to put, we've got to put pressure on them, one way or another, to make sure this one and only opportunity is used for affordable homes. I don't know what else to say really, though. We've got to do absolutely everything we can legally, within our powers, to make sure that it's affordable homes that are built there. And I would suggest that we put this onto the next item on the agenda, which is our action plan and make sure it figures very highly on that. Was that enough of an introduction, Derek?
Ah, that was excellent. I was very moved, thank you John. Because I think it's very, very important. I don't think, like you were quite rightly pointing out, if you're looking at sites that are available, that is the site. Penny?
Right, so first of all, I'd like to ask a question. Is the actual building that was built this? Or what?
I think some of it is.
Okay, so that's the first of the one. I mean, that's how we achieve this, but I think that is, because I absolutely agree that that's what we've got to do. I think we need to work out the best way that we can achieve this. But the most critical thing around this is where developments go failing in their targets is A, what do we mean by affordable housing? Absolute nonsense. So the formula that's used is not affordable for 99% population because it's obviously mixed in the cost of property here. So I think I would be pushing that actually there was a far greater percentage of rental population on proper rents, you know, low rents for people. So social housing in its proper sense of words. So I think part of this has got to be that we define what we mean quite clearly in order to achieve our ends, otherwise we're just going to end up with another development that only, you know, people will not afford to live in and that's pointless. But also, I think it would be very useful if we had a conversation, you know, between ourselves about the possibility of the, you know, converting of other shops in the town. Because I think it's got to be a mixed thing about how we build and how we also look at existing stock, either upgrading it or making it fit for purpose in a way that hasn't been written on.
So conscious to remember what the item on the year is about, about the site, not about shops and those. Want to bring Ginny in?
Yes, this is something that's really important to me as well. Steve and I actually both campaigned for the use of the HMS site for a variety of different purposes. We wanted, we liked very much the idea of it remaining within the community in the East End. So perhaps using some of the building, including, some of the site, including Felt Side, which is the listed building, as a community area so that there could be something put there for the younger element, you know, like a skate park or a climbing wall or something like that. And then using the listed building as a community centre for the East End, which it is very much lacking at the moment. And with the East End extending further out towards Corbridge, I think that's even more necessary now. But yes, there is a tremendous amount of area that is available there for community housing and for affordable housing. As Penny says, I went to a planning meeting before the pandemic hit in 2020, so it was in January, February, I think, at the community centre. And there were various developments. And I was speaking to one lady there who was in charge of construction on one site. And I said, and will there be affordable housing there? And she told me, yes. And I said, how much is that then? And she said, well, our one-bedroom apartments start from £199,000. So that was actually not affordable at all. And I totally agree with Penny that it does have to be within the reach of families and individuals on lower incomes. Not only that, but a lot of the houses that are built further up are purported to be four or five bedrooms and two or three of those rooms are tiny shoeboxes. They have to be fit for purpose as well.
Yes, to tie with Ginny, and a lot of the doors were knocked on in Hexham saying this is a huge issue. People were very concerned about what was going to happen to the HMS site being right on their doorstep. And no one else had ideas straight around. I mean, from what I can understand, Felt Side is listed one and a major group of money from a high school will come from that selling that off. However, it's a huge site, sporting will control the fields and Beaumont Building and Community Garden are huge on the side as well. I mean, I looked into the community action of the government value of making it a community asset, designating it as such, which I think is three to five years of time where there would be an idea that we could perhaps, we need to buy it ourselves. That's the idea of a community asset. But designating it as such, it kind of forces of Mike Paul, of course, NCC to think about, that we use it for, you know, if we put that motion forward, it was thinking about designating it that, you know, that it has value for the community, that it belongs to the children of Hexham. We should do that to the children of Hexham and sort of form a family homes. I really do believe that. So I wonder if that's something you could maybe take forward.
Right, so should I read this bit now? Okay, so.
Might be slightly different to yours?
Well, I was just going to read out just this statement and then we'll have a look. So this comes from David Clell, who was the Hexham Neighbourhood Plan. You know, they were the driving force behind that from 2015 to 2021. Now, what he has said here, he said, the former middle school site is owned by county council. To change its use, the approval of the Secretary of State for Education must be obtained. Sport England will be a statutory consultant because of the loss of provision of sport if you went down that housing way. But the new provision in the high school especially, or whether provides a much increased intensity of availability for greater sport. So basically, just like you say, you've displaced the sport area from the middle school and you put in the new site in the west. So actually, Hexham as a whole hasn't lost anything, it's just been moved. And obviously, that gives you that gain. So I think what he's trying to say is that that is the process. If we wanted to go down that route, that is the process we would have to go for it to be included in the Hexham neighbourhood plan. Is that right, Jane? Yeah, yeah, that's what we think. So I'll leave that thought and I'll bring Ginny in.
Just a couple of observations. I think it may be a bit more difficult than David, who I have great respect. There is a loss of sporting land there and that will be an issue. At the end of the day, it has to be commercial because the county council with their sums of the portions, some of the profit to pay for the middle school. So it's not just simply what we want, there's an accounting procedure and verification to go through. I don't really think, you know, honestly, I've done community assets and I'm doing one with a community centre now. It's really difficult, community assets on such a big scheme and getting funded for it. You might get £40,000 or even £400 on this sort of scale and there's 145 houses, they're going to have to bring the big boys in. I spoke to a couple of developers about the lab, well, the lab who's doing the apartments at the community centre, he's discarded it, he says, the big boys will take it. So that's what we're.
So that's, that's what we're up against. I think there's a commercial reality about it. I think what we've got to do, and I respect John for the work he's done and did before, is there is a huge rental market that's becoming increasingly unaffordable for young people. I'm joining you a bit to be told that here, but please, you know, buy second houses in Hexham because, you know, it's just increasing all that pressure. So I'd be very keen, I'm not good at a campaign, that has universal approval rather than political approval. And then trying to get as much affordable housing, especially for young people and especially to keep young people in Hexham rather than doing that.
Yeah, just to give you a bit of a done deal to be realistic about it, I know they have to have good money. Sporting and control, a bit of a fight. It is sad though, that comparison on the east side, which is open and available for a lot of people to play on, a lot of kids in the east to play on. And then moving to the Hexham middle, sorry, human side, which is sealed off with big metal. It's really sad. It is really expensive to rent. But, you know, kids go to school playgrounds to learn how to ride a bike, they learn how to roller skate. All these things are learned to my kids to learn in playgrounds because they can't be exposed to it. And it would be so quickly, there's, yes, it's harder to continue that sort of openness of the Hexham middle school site over the human side where it's so closed off perhaps. So I don't think, I don't think it transfers across that broadly.
Right, okay, so let's, so what are we seeing here? So we're being asked to consider potentially use of the former Hexham middle school site. For, for community, for community housing, for affordable housing.
Genuinely affordable.
Affordable, definitely. Affordable housing. Are we, are we, are we in favour, so that's being put forward, are we in favour of that? Are you, are you voting for this?
Can I say one small thing?
Yes, of course.
So I went across to see Corbridge chairman and Mick.
Yes.
And they've said that they've got, they've got hold of four affordable houses because the developer that came in had a remit to have affordable housing. So that, it's all been paid for, the council are now going to run that. That doesn't give the three hundred and forty houses that you get, but if this is a, I don't think you should go into that. But if this is a decision that's going to go through as part of that, there will be a remit to say, so many affordable houses.
Yeah.
And obviously that, but Corbridge now has, it's remit, four or five from the big developments happening in Corbridge.
Right, Jimmy, the last one.
Okay, so I'm back on that one. Is, again, when Suzanne and I were canvassing in the East End, we went out to the new developments out on the Corbridge Road. And most of those are privately owned. There is a section there which was billed as affordable housing. When I spoke to the residents in the affordable houses, they were crammed into these tiny little boxes with inadequate parking, inadequate access, poor lighting. Everybody knew where the so-called affordable houses were because they were the rubbish ones that had not been invested in properly. And I think that we can do better than that for our residents. And we should.
So, so what, so what's, what's happened now? Jamie, I'm not telling you what's going on, but why don't we do this?
My understanding is whatever you agree will be put forward to the development department who are going to charge off the Hexham neighbourhood plan with the request for inclusion and we'll take it from now because anything else required for that.
Right, is everybody clear on that? Right, no vote, no vote, no more. So who got the vote? All those in favour of doing what we just said? I'll just get me thoughts. This is about the Hexham middle school to be, we want to say that's part of an affordable housing solution for Hexham. And for that to be pushed forward, so.
Yeah, I agree too.
Okay, right.
Can you express your social, socially mixed and then you can make a comment?
Say what?
Socially mixed. I think that there wouldn't be, let's not pretend, we're not, not from the county council. I'm a council state there, let's be honest. So for us to have a chance of getting what we want, if not all what we want, socially mixed gives us that flexibility to argue our case rather than just dismiss because it's not financially.
So what you're saying is it's not a hundred percent affordable housing, period, that you're saying it's mixed and mixed?
Absolutely, because that's the only way you're going to get it through.
So, so that's a proposal, so.
No, I'm not thirty now, I've got to say something.
Just to be fair, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we're saying, when we're voting for this, we're not saying that it's all going to be a hundred percent affordable housing. That's not on the table, is it? It's, it's, you're saying we want to see this to be part of an affordable housing solution. I think that's what we're saying.
If it was put like that, I'd vote for it.
My, sorry, yeah.
Go on, yes.
I just think that if you just leave that little hole there, then we'll be back to where we are with the development that we've got in the East End now. Is that not right? I mean, I, you know, it may be that we then have to, if we get anywhere with this, we might have to compromise. But if we start off with a compromise, then we've got to start off with absolutely what we want, in my opinion.
Yep.
All right, so. So, so, so how do we word, how do we going to word this? So we want, what we're going to ask for is that the Hexham, the former Hexham middle, middle school site is to be designated a, an affordable housing site? Does that, does that work?
Yes.
Should the proposal be seconded?
Okay, so, so the proposal, I'll propose that, is there a second there?
Yep.
Okay, we've got a second there. All in favour? Okay, against?
And for, for the reasons I've said.
Wrong. Building sponsor. Great story. Right, fifteen to three, which bank to switch the town council account? Do we need all this, mate? Give them a three nights. I don't, I don't.
I agree with that.
Right.
So I was asked, Hexham High School backs. It's come and asked it since history. Lloyds, Barclays, Virgin Money. What figures? So we agreed to move away from H S B C Bank because of its investment in fossil fuels. If you look at Lloyds, Lloyds have invested since twenty sixteen eight thousand seven hundred million pounds in on gas companies. Barclays has invested a hundred thousand million pounds in fossil fuels, so they're out. That leaves Virgin Money, who were born out of Northern Rock bailout. They took the loss in twenty nineteen, so we've got to sort of, in my mind, assess bank safety because of the loss of twenty million they've gained in twenty nineteen. They also had to handle scandals of missing soul, bullish protection to the tune of forty-nine million. And also the bank was also associated with Virgin Atlantic, which received a one point two billion pound rescue deal from the government. So I was quite wary of actually Virgin there. And then when I was speaking to Jane, I've been having Jane, I'm speaking to her and then and saying, what do you actually do? How many times are you going into the blocks? And you said about months a year for three, three transactions. So in my mind, I'm thinking, well, if Jane doesn't go in once a year for three transactions, is that going to close? The bank down? Probably not. And in terms of what we have as, as options going forward, I was speaking to Jane because I came on the Tridos. So every time I looked around on the internet to look at ethical banks, Tridos and Unity Trust Bank, it just kept popping up time after time. So I said to Jane, the choice is yours, which one would you prefer? And Jane actually said to me that we had that sort of some account for, if a unity trust bank has come up, and a few councils that do use unity trusts. Penny has mentioned Unity Trust Bank to me as well. They, they support lots of charities, they're backed by parish community town councils. They've got the usual kind of banking services, they're linked to charity associations and charity finance groups. And then I just picked out two examples of what they've done. Now, interestingly, one of the examples I pulled out is that they've loaned to councils to buy properties. So they've done, they've done a housing cooperative in Barretson Housing Co-op. They've loaned out three hundred and fifty thousand for some affordable housing near Newcastle. They're basically just based around what a council should be. They're based in community projects, they invest in communities. And they're just much more fun or aligned than some of the banks that I've just mentioned. So I asked Jane to choose and Jane said, should we trust, should we use? I think if we need to handle cash, then Jane could use a post office account to do that, transfer the money. But I think Jane was saying, perhaps once you could say to those people, there must be utility bills, there must be a bank. Maybe we could ask them to move to pay online and that takes that out. So my recommendation is to switch to Unity Trust Bank.
Any, any questions?
Can I just ask a couple of questions? I'm not answering it. Is it online, do they have headquarters along, you know, what's the background to it?
Based in the UK, I can give you some, I can look it up.
The only problem with banks is you can make the case that it's all, if you look back to the two thousand and nine banking crisis, you know, some functionally in prison for a long time.
Yeah, but you're actually right, they must scan, they kept scanning for unethical banks. The top banks kept coming up, they couldn't find anything against Tridos, they couldn't find anything against Unity. The other banks kept popping up from time to time, but they just could not find anything that said to me, this particular bank, you know, has had some bad, some bad press. Who are we? Who we are? Been around for thirty-five years, helping social organisation. Unity Trust Bank was founded first in May, not May, for all that envisioned by trade unions to create a bank that would embrace the philosophy of serving common good. And now it's an independent organisation.
Does it have shareholders? Is it a not-for-profit bank?
It's based in Birmingham. I do have, there are some other councils using it, it's not in time as well. I think Penny, some of your charities using as well, Penny.
Well, I haven't asked it to the, the legislators. I think we've absolutely got to move away.
Okay, so a proposal's being put forward by Mike, which is, you know, we've decided we're exiting the H S B C, that was the last one. Proposal being put forward by, by Mike to put to land a different part, which is the Unity Trust. So all those in favour of moving to Unity Trust, a load of hands. Okay, right, unanimous, grand, welcome, Mike, you're welcome. A load of presentations. Right, right, action plan, right, consciousness, we've got to finish by eight o'clock, so we've got fifteen minutes. Action plan, so page fifteen, sorry, not page fifteen, page fourteen. So I'd just like to thank Dave, Lily and John, who worked with me. We pulled up together all the information that we got from, from everybody and tried to condense it into something that's bite-sized and really readable. And you can see that over there, so it's all, it's all worth, you know, just throwing into that melting pot and trying to tease it all out and bring it all together. So the action plan is, is being sort of centered around a handful of titles. So you've got Work to Work to Advise to Town Centre, Progress to Build the Action Plan. Support tourism and gain quality status for the council, retaining reading black or the cemetery. We work towards more affordable housing and ensure a separate does not run into loss. So that was all key items. Is there any comments that you contend that this is a plan? I think the observation I would like to put that we cannot deliver all that, this is in one year. You know, it's just, it's a big plan, but this is a plan that runs twenty-one, from twenty twenty-one, four years. And even then, I think someone has made not all the, we're not a baby, that we're on a journey to delivering some of this. Is there any questions?
Can I just add one thing? I've listened to Alison's presentation. To include heritage in some, somewhere, possibly work with public act and heritage groups for rental events and other signs, just to include it. So it's something that we can put on notice, this is part of our action plan. And I think going forward, this is my view, it might not be shared by everybody. But we say we're heritage town and we don't really take advantage of it. And I think there's some problems coming in the future with the shambles and all this and demands on money. And I, I think if that was in our action plan, if there was something that was detrimental, historically to the town, I think that gives us a reason to make a standard for heritage projects in Hexham. So if that could be included somewhere in the future.
Yeah, yeah, I think it seems fair. So I'm just looking at this, at Progress, 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 which obviously is a heritage action zone. And the angle below that, which is working towards making the more place more attractive to shoppers. I mean, it's about the wider more place, of course. I'm just wondering if that, that takes in, you know, what you're just saying.
On page nineteen, it does say modernise and add information towards the cross town, so you could act to that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a figure, it should have a discreet section for it.
Okay, but that, I just wanted a catch-all for the days of the future that we may not have.
So, so you think?
Just to say that I don't know whether this is relevant or whether it needs going or anything, but I have recently started working with the skaters at the seal. And I've got a meeting tomorrow night with them and H Y I to look at how we go about raising funding for the redevelopment of the skate park.
Jamie, can I comment on that? I need to, because I can say I'm a trustee of Hexham Youth and Unity. And I've spoken to Derek literally moments before the meeting started. We're looking at putting together a proposal to do it through section one of six money. So there is an amount of money in the pot for play areas.
Yep.
What, what's, it's quite, I'm saying it's quite complicated. There aren't that many companies that do skate, perhaps the nearest one that, that there is, I think it's Edinburgh, is it? Somewhere non-south. We're looking at putting forward a scheme for about a hundred and fifty thousand. It's almost off the peg. This is what you get for a hundred thousand, this is what you get for a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty. The achievable one that we think we can get is a hundred and fifty thousand. And if we apply for one of six money, the best person to, to be in partnership with is the town council. So for that reasons. So the town council could, correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, if we partner, but very many that were contributing twenty-five thousand from the previous council, they would apply for something like a hundred thousand and they would expect other, other funders to come in for the residue. So that's, that's where we are with.
Yeah, Nathan has mentioned that to me as well, but we're also looking at things like Sporting England and the lottery and community chest and stuff. But that's really not.
For me, the twenty-five thousand was the most important one, that's why I keep talking about city power funding. If you get twenty-five thousand, it's harder to get that than the twenty-five thousand. I'm, I'm not as optimistic on Sporting England because it isn't of a competition class. It's, it was.
The lottery design is not.
Yeah, you could get funded for it. It, it's, uh, if it was lottery funding from the late, yeah, you could get funded for it. But Kida, who I've got the most time in the world for, is a master at the smaller brands, uh, and I'm, I'm sure she, she would get some smaller trusts and a bit of it. But I'd be more optimistic, having met with Kida previously and talked about the, uh, the forms. There is a meeting, I understand, uh, in November, uh, to discuss one oh six money, and the community centres putting in for someone, and other royal people putting in for someone as well. Uh, but that's the route it would set up, you know, please, please get involved. And if, if, you know, alongside me, if we get what we want, that would be the answer.
So, so I think, I think that's, sorry, okay. And I, I just, I think that's probably a mission from this plan, really. That, that could be added in. Um, I, I was just quick in trying to click through this, and I'm going to try and see where, where, where actually it would sit, um.
Yeah, I was doing the same, I was clicking through.
So, so I think, um, I think we'll, we'll have, we'll have another.
Could, could you put sport in it?
Yeah, I was, I was second sport.
Sport in the play, because there is Hexham football club, or the, the league club, or whatever, you know, that, that's, that is sport.
Or investment in gigs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good, right, so, so I'd like, and John, yes?
Just going back to the middle school site, we had something about that and the affordable housing.
Yeah.
But, um, we will do anything we can that's legal to. For affordable housing.
Yeah, so we're not, not in under the, um, more, more of housing, um, include that, that site in there. That's brilliant. Any, Jane?
Do we, obviously, the, the action plan looks, looks great to me. Do we then, when we come to doing the budgets, do we then sort of take the action plan and say, well, if we realise that this is an action plan, maybe the budget can go this way?
To a point.
If you don't mean, so, that, you know, is this just going to drive the budgets and so on, as Steve was talking about, like, well, this feasibility study or the catch, whatever, that's because it's being driven from this action plan, that's the link, you know?
Absolutely, I think that's it.
Absolutely. The children bar. So we change this to that to the form, yes?
Yes.
Oh, that's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, yeah, I think, I think that's an excellent thought, Mike. Um, I think recognizing that this is an action plan that comes over many years, you know, obviously we're, we're putting monies out, out per year. Good, good. So are we, are we accepting this action plan?
With amendments, yeah.
With amendments, brilliant. Um, right, so the, 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 uh, next level is, uh, sixteen, so that's the normal draft minutes enclosed. That's just for the, I see, the board red doors on the left over the month. Um, seventeen correspondence.
Okay, councillors have received information on arthritis actions autumn programme. The county council's community climate champion launch event on the twenty ninth of September. Mobile distribution unit notice of venues for lateral flow home testing kits. Community action movement e-news, NALC e-news, the V C S support services e-bulletins and job and trustee agencies. Northumberland C P A support services e-bulletin, preview launch for time-dealt hospice furniture at home. Uh, county council funding e-bulletin, Hexham space for nature update, Warbella Northumberland story, temporary traffic regulation orders relating to Unendsgate and Yarwich Road, the Dazaz autumn newsletter, uh, active travel on the new Q H S H M S site, the Hexham climate march on the sixteenth of October, Western Northumberland sports awards nominations, and I also promised a local resident who phoned to say thank you very much for the beds and tubs floor displays in the town centre, and I'll pass it on to this meeting in full, to the full caps.
Well, that's wonderful. Aye aye, aye aye. Um, so any urgent matters, any urgent matters, or any, any urgent matters? Just wanna, just like, scotch the rumours immediately, that I am not going for the next James Bond. Those rumours are going round.
I've lost my money. I'm a ten million pounder, I'm, I have to reach for it.
All right, that's it. Thank you so much, everybody.